If we could just be on the same page enough to work together a little bit. And so I think that mixture is the reason that we felt that this was such a moment to try to write a book to capture what we were teaching.
Yeah, we've been talking to Nobel Prize winning physicist Saul Perlmutter. He's the co-author, along with John Campbell and Robert McCowan of the book Third Millennium Thinking: Creating Sense in a World of Nonsense. Saul Perlmutter, congratulations on the book and thanks for your time.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
And you are listening to Here and Now.
When I was in law school, I drove a red two-door Nissan Sentra. I'm Corvah Coleman from NPR News. I thought it was a cool standout car until I came out of the bank and found all these other two-door red Nissan Sentras. And my husband said it was ubiquitous. Everybody had it and I wasn't so special. So then I got a blue Saturn and then I got a minivan. Hot cars just aren't my way to stand out. Turn your car into the programs you love.
1-800-789-8627 and thanks.
For three years, hundreds of people in Texas and Illinois received $1,000 a month, no strings attached.
It helped me breathe better. It helped my mind clear a little bit because I didn't feel like as much of a failure as a parent. I was able to take care of my kids' needs.
I'm Tiziana Deering. What we've learned from the largest study on guaranteed income programs to date, that's on the next On Point.
On Point, weekday evenings at 7 on Radio IQ.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Rhodes Scholar, a not-for-profit educational travel organization offering adventures for adults in more than 100 countries. Learn more at rhodesscholar.org/explore. This is Here and Now. For many students and teachers, it's time to head back to the classroom. For some, it's back to the band room. In small towns across Utah, students who play instruments such as violin or cello don't always have the chance to play with their peers in an orchestra. But KUER's David Kondos tells us that some orchestra students got a rare chance to do just that.
Wayne County covers nearly 2,500 square miles of south-central Utah. There's Alpine Peaks, green farm fields, red rock deserts. But one thing that's not too plentiful here? Orchestra kids. Eleven-year-old violin student Journey Pace is from the town of Lyman. She says sometimes it can be a little tough to be part of such a small group.
There's probably three or four people that play violin and we all have to drive down to Torrey to go to the same teacher.
These are very small towns. Lyman and Torrey have around 200 residents each. And unlike many urban or suburban school districts, Wayne County doesn't offer an orchestra program.
Let's make a really big circle, everybody.
That's why for kids like Journey, what's happening here is a big deal. It's a one-day workshop where around two dozen local students get to learn from world-class symphony musicians who came from Colorado, Texas, even England and Germany.
They're like professional violin players and just like see how far they've went makes me want to do it, too.
Oh, okay. And so that's something you're thinking about?
Yeah.
Violin bees, raise your hand.
Journey's local violin teacher, the only one in the county, is Lindsay Sheeler. She says opening kids' eyes to those types of big dreams matters.
To see that aha moment on their face. This is what music is about.
The workshop is organized by the Torrey Chamber Music Festival at the Community Center in Bicknell, population 323. It culminates in a concert in which the kids perform side by side with the professionals.
Okay, are we ready?
First, they break into small groups. Cellos are in the foyer, violas in the hallway. Violins are spread out from the kitchen to the patio. After rehearsal, nine-year-old violinists Bethany Wing and Seffi Fullerton grab a little extra practice in the entryway.
Okay, let's restart from the second.
Learning this stuff takes hard work, Seffi says. And showtime looms.
I'm nervous because I get stage fright a lot and my mom usually puts it on video and it gets me super nervous.
But she says her instrument helps her work through big emotions.
When I'm sad and I play it, like yesterday, I got super sad. So I played the violin and it helped me. And if I'm angry, I can play it and it will make me calm.
That is the big-picture benefit of giving more kids this type of opportunity, says Sheeler, who also helps with the workshop. Most students here probably won't grow up to play in a symphony, but the lessons they learn now about connecting with themselves and with others can have far-reaching ripple effects.
Music is about playing with emotion and expressing and having that ability to communicate beyond words. So if we can get kids to feel that, we are building empathy in our communities and compassion. And I feel like we need a lot of that right now.
After hours of instruction and rehearsal, it's time for the main event.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone.
The kids will play seven songs, from the William Tell Overture to How Far I'll Go from Disney's Moana. As families crowd into the room, Carrie Pace watches her daughter Journey in the violin section.
It's amazing to see it all come together and, you know, I mean, people that are as talented as you'll find anywhere in the world are here playing with them in Bicknell at a community center. It's amazing.
And this one workshop can't erase all the geographic barriers these students face. But Sheeler says it can help them feel less alone.
For me to see them in this setting where they get to take the stage and they get to be first chair of their section and they get to lead the entire orchestra for starting the piece, that is a really big deal. I mean, it brings tears to my eyes.
So at least for a few hours here in this community center, the string students of Wayne County get to feel what it's like to be a real orchestra. For Here and Now, I'm David Kondos in Bicknell, Utah.
We're following the opening of the Democratic National Convention in Chicago today. As we heard earlier this hour, protesters are demonstrating against U.S. support for Israel and the war in Gaza. A reminder, you can hear live special coverage on the convention from NPR News, starting at 9 tonight Eastern Time on many NPR news stations. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Lisa Mullins in Boston.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting for 2 o'clock PM, August 19, 2024. Before we get started, I thought it might be good to remind us of our vision and mission as a city that we aspire to and that we're working toward. It's on the very top of our agenda at every meeting. The city of Roanoke is a safe, caring, and economically vibrant community in which to live, learn, work, play, and prosper. A vibrant urban center with strong neighborhoods set amongst the spectacular beauty of Virginia's Blue Ridge. This time, I'd like to ask our clerk if she would please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent today.
Thank you, and there is a quorum present. This time, I'll invite us to stand for the invocation, which will be delivered by Council Member Moon Reynolds, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May we bow, please. Almighty God, we gather before you today with hearts filled of hope and minds open to your wisdom. As we convene this meeting, we seek your presence among us. Grant us the insight and discernment to make decisions that serve the common good and align with principles of justice and integrity. Empower us with the wisdom to understand diverse perspectives and the courage to act with fairness and compassion. Help us to work together harmoniously, respecting each viewpoint as a potential avenue for your guidance. May we approach our duties with humility, recognizing that our strengths and success come through your support. Bless our efforts and lead us to overcomes that benefit all. Remembering all always that our endeavors are possible through your grace, we ask these things in your holy name, and may all God's people say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Moon Reynolds. Couple of announcements. First of all, all of our council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM and Saturdays from 10 AM to 5 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. You may access the application on the city's website at roanokeva.gov. And if you need any assistance whatsoever, you can feel free to contact our city clerk's office and they'll be glad to assist you. Item number two on our agenda today are presentations and acknowledgements, and it's my honor to invite Councilmember Sanchez Jones to share with us on an official trip that she and others from our city made to our sister city Saint Lo, France, from May 31 through June 7. And Councilmember Sanchez Jones, feel free to invite any guests forward as part of your presentation.
Well, good afternoon. Bonjour. I want to start by saying how deeply grateful I am to Mayor Sherman Lee for the honor of representing the city, for allowing me the honor of representing the city of Roanoke at the 80th anniversary of the D-Day commemoration. It was a profound experience to be a part of the significant event, and I am proud to have represented our city on such momentous occasions. So we'll start presentation. When we went to... We had a chance to visit, we first started visiting all the different monuments and points of interest. And one that was really particularly meaningful to me as well as to Tom, it was this visiting this tunnel where lots of people during World War II, the D-Day, took refuge in this particular place. This young man that's standing there was six years old, was it six years old? When D-Day was going on, and he took refuge in there. But the, one of the extraordinary things about him, it wasn't into recent that he started talking about his trauma, as well as many other people in, of his age, that did not talk about their trauma until later on. Then we went to, somebody might have to help me with this slide. So we went to see, we went to the museum and we could see all the different pieces of the buildings as well as bombs.
They used the mic.
Oh, okay. Sorry. This one?
Yes.
Okay. So as you can see, there's pieces of the buildings as well there. As well as, we went into a part of the museum where depicted how people lived, how people lived during World War II, before World War II. You know, regular bedroom. And we went, also went to another visit, another site. This was Saint Mary's, this is not Saint Mary's, Church of Magdalene, where it is a church that it was, it was used as a lepre, lepre, lepre cori back in the 1500s. Now it's converted into a museum for the 25th and 30-some infantry. I'm sorry, I forgot. But there were people there. This young man that you can see there was also tracing the footsteps of his grandfather, as well as the lady in the middle. And this young man on the right, he was 101. He was one of the service members that was there and survived World War II. His story was, was very moving. On the day of the, we had a national ceremony where they had a choir honoring the civilians. We also had the privilege to go and meet with President Macron at a ceremony that was a beautiful ceremony celebrating the resiliency of the survivors. This is at another event, also the same day. And this was very nice. This was a choir where both students, from students from Saint Lo, as well as from Alen, Germany, performed together. And you have different pieces. Each conductor took the time in, in leading the group. This is at a commemoration to the 21st resistance fighters. And these were fighter, they were, they were fighters of the resistance, but a lot of people, they were, somebody told that they were fighters. So they were, they were killed at this precise space. And we had a chance to lay wreath of that monument right there. Also, this was, this had been a prison, and we had an opportunity to lay a wreath there. We also planted trees in memory of the surviving families. These are some of the students that participated. Right in front is Vivian. Eva, you're there? I mean, Ella, you're there in that picture?
I, I was teaching.
Okay. And Eva is right behind there, students. And Ella will be here. She will come up and say a few things about her experience as well. Right here, we are re-signing and reaffirming our sister city agreement, which we have been sister cities for 25 years now. So we have, in this picture, we have other city members, other twin sisters, which are called twinning, from Alen, Germany, Christ Church, as well as from Saint Giselaïne, Germany, sorry, Belgium. And this is, in the picture is the leader of the twin sister, her name is Janine, a wonderful guest and historian. And here's all of us signing with her. And this is the gift exchange. The mayor, Mayor Macron, not Macron, Lejeune, presented us with a gift, which I will present in a minute. And in turn, the city of Roanoke sent a gift. We have a beautiful painting and a book of Virginia. Here, I had a chance to observe what their election process. And for people here that complain about how many people aren't a ballot here, that's what I thought. And no visit abroad for me escapes visiting a firehouse and learning about, about how they do things there. And it was amazing. I had lots of pictures, but I only put one. And now I would like to ask Tom and Ella to come up for, and talk about the trip as well.
Hello, welcome. Thank you. And to second Vivian's statement about the honor, I mean, you know, she came in and I've said this and many have heard it. I know when Sherman started to speak about asking her, he got about three words in and she said yes. So then it was my turn. Of course, I'm gonna go. And it was, it was, it was an extraordinary experience, and I'll turn and face the audience because I do speak rather loudly. It was quite the experience to learn so much about these people who we've been sister cities with for so long, to go firsthand there. And, you know, all of us here, when we're taught in our history classes, we're always taught about like the D-Day, the invasion, the Americans, the British, the Canadians, the fight, the battles, and so on and so forth. We miss out on something very important that was shown up there. They remember the people that were killed. Thousands and thousands and thousands. That picture right there, that she'll show in a moment, and the pictures we have and seeing really demonstrate the almost complete obliteration of that city. So when President Macron came and he spoke, he would reiterate that, that Saint Lo was resilient, that Saint Lo could come back, that their people were this type of person, people. And they really are. They were fabulous, fabulous people. And if given an opportunity, if you ever have an opportunity, don't pass. Do not pass on it. It's well worth it. So I thank you for that brief moment. I'll let Ella talk about much more interesting stuff. She had to deal directly with students in France, so. Thank you all very much.
Well, this is, first of all, such an honor to be in front of all of you esteemed council members. I will adjust this so we can hear. And just thank you so much, Ms. Sanchez Jones, as well as Anne Hackworth, Professor Jagusso, Janine Verov, and the other people involved in this exchange. It does go further than diplomacy. I had the opportunity to be somewhat of a teaching assistant to the Institute Saint Lo. I taught English, which is funny to kind of dissect our language, understand how we break it down. As I've been learning French, I feel like I learned a lot more from the students there than I really even taught them. So it was very, very fun. I've been studying French for six years, so to be chosen by Hollins University, and of course, the people who were involved in this selection process was an honor. I think perhaps the biggest honor was seeing the effects of D-Day and how 80 years later we remember, they remember. People ask me all the time, do, do French people like Americans? I said, well, maybe not in France, but they certainly do in Normandy because they remember. They remember, and there is great camaraderie there. And so in the three times I've had the opportunity to live in France, work in France, and get to meet a lot of people, this was by far the most amazing opportunity. And these people really, really are thankful for the sister city partnership that we have together. I just wanted to sort of urge this council to continue wanting to send students over, wanting to send young people who will continue on this partnership because it has just been the most wonderful thing. I just hosted two of their students over at my home in northern Virginia, and it was just wonderful. My parents got to ask them questions because of course, they've sent me over there, but they don't really ever get to be engaged in that cultural exchange. And it's been absolutely great to see how young people over the past 25 years and hopefully into the future can be a part of this cultural exchange, learn some French, and learn a little bit more about our history with World War II, but also France in general. So thank you so much for having us today. Thank you.
I forgot to mention that since 2007, I visited, in 2007, I visited Saint Lo with my daughter Christina, where we started meeting people and have friends to this day. Plus, we have hosted numerous people in our house, and one young man has come back twice. And our, Bill Beszpech and I share a son, so he's, we are his parents. Would like to ask the members of the Sister Cities Saint Lo to come up front, and if you have something to say, plus I'm going to give you some gifts. Share something about our sister cities.
Yes, I'm Anne Hackworth. I'm the co-chair with Peggy Wells of the Roanoke-Saint Lo Sister City Group. We are the youngest of the sister cities. You know, Roanoke has seven sister cities. And it's been a wonderful personal experience, having gone to France myself. I also taught English over there and in France. And we've been enjoying our guests off and on, and it's been a wonderful experience. Peggy?
So Anne and I have worked with a lot of people to bring the Roanoke-Saint Lo relationship into being more than 25 years ago, so we've been involved in a long time. I would stress the exchanges. The exchanges have been wonderful. The students that have gone, the students that have come here, and the adults in both directions as well. The things we have all learned and the relationships that we've developed. And I can go on, but I won't.
Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council, it's great to be looking at you from this side of the podium. My wife Sheri and I had the privilege of going to Saint Lo as part of the official visit from Roanoke Valley Sister Cities in 2019. That was the 75th anniversary. And one thing that really impressed me that I think most Americans don't know, I didn't know, but we should know, just to piggyback on something that Ella said. On the highways that lead from Omaha Beach to Saint Lo and to other cities and other directions and on out into the countryside, every kilometer, there is a bollard by the side of the road that tells you which armored division, which infantry division, which units came down this highway after D-Day to push the Nazis out of Germany. So they're reminded every day when they drive on those highways, they never forget what America has done for them. And we should never forget that they were our very first friends when we became an independent country, and we should never forget what they did for us, especially because they financed most of the revolution. And finally, let me just say, as treasurer of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities, please accept our appreciation for the generous support. Without your help, we would not be able to support these cultural exchanges. So we just wanted to take a few minutes to help you understand why that continued support from you as part of the budgeting process is so important. from you as part of the budgeting process is so important, not just to Saint-Lô, but to all seven of our sister cities on four continents around the world. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor and members of council, if you would come down and have some things to...
This is the, is the remains of the Church of Montmartre. The only thing that was standing after the monument was this archway with the cross.
All right, hang on one second. Great, thanks.
They were very generous in their gifts, so they also gave us this wonderful rendering and water covered floor of the city.
Great.
It's gotta keep...
This was the signing of the 25th agreement, we resigned our sister city agreement, so I'll give you that.
Let's all stand up again so that we can receive this, and let's thank them all.
I'm being from a third world country, decided to do a coup, and I became the mayor of Roanoke. You see that? We see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez Jones, and everyone who was a part of the presentation, and it's wonderful to celebrate 25 years of our sister city relationship with Saint-Lô, and also, what an honor to be there for the 80th anniversary of D-Day. So thank you all very much.
It was really an honor.
Any council members want to offer any words?
Yep.
Anybody?
No questions?
We're good.
We did a wonderful job, Ms. Sanchez Jones, thank you so much.
All right.
There was so much to talk about, and I have so many pictures, but, you know, time.
Let me say one thing. Since I'm kind of the oldest guy on board, the sister city program, where something started here, none of us really understood the opportunity that it might present to the Roanoke Valley and the people that we got to know over the years in all our sister cities. So there are some people who helped get this started, who are no longer part of it, and of course, we've got the committee here today. Let's make sure that you all know how much we appreciate the long-term investment that both our citizens and the city has made in creating relationships with other people. Of interest to me, I recall my father, who was in World War II, and he would never talk about it. We tried to get the judge engaged, and it wasn't something he wanted to remember. And it's interesting that you found that some of those younger people finally have become aware of and willing to say what that war meant. And in a day like today, where things are very upended, and we don't know what's gonna happen, it's important to remember friends, and remember how others have helped us through the years. So thanks to the Sister City Committee and all you have done for many years.
Thank you. Thank you all. Our next item is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. This is a time that we set aside as city council as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council as she may deem appropriate. So, Madam Clerk, do we have persons signed up to speak today?
We do, we have approximately eight speakers.
If you would just call two at a time, so that the second, the next person can know they're on the ready.
I'll be done. Okay, thank you. And you will have three minutes each. The first speaker is Tom Carr, followed by Brenda Allen.
I will pass on my time.
Okay. Ms. Allen, and then we'll have Kathy Carter following Ms. Allen.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Vice Mayor Cobb and members of city council, my name is Brenda Allen. I'm from 12 Gilmer Avenue Northeast, and I'm representing historic Gainesboro, I should say really, and the Gainesboro, entire Gainesboro community. I'm here to speak on the parking lot near the high ed center that they are proposing for the city to deed them, I think it would accommodate 34 parking spaces, to deed to them for their use. I'm here to say, and on behalf of Gainesboro, that we're not for it. I feel like it's urban renewal part two, starting all over again, and the way we was approached about it was not satisfactory. I mean, it was kind of like, you know, we had Mrs. Dunkley come in saying that, you know, this is what they're gonna want to do, because we don't want to make students have to pay for this parking or whatever. And to be honest with you, a lot of them park on our street and beyond, there's been plenty of parking spaces. And we really kind of, just kind of was, just sprung at us. And I think the bottom line is, and I do have a couple of questions I want to ask about it, but when we talk about, I feel like we're, a lot of things is, we're trying to make things happen in our community, and we're having a hard time getting it done. We're coming to these meetings, we're, you know, voicing our opinions about what we would like to see, we're trying to engage, and yet, we're still, you know, not getting what we need. We know these opera funding is supposed, is coming in, and as of to this date, we don't have amphitheater going up, you know, there's just a lot not happening, the playground, all of a sudden, that's, I see it was going up in one area, but there's a whole lot we're trying to do, and we're not getting it done, and it's very, very frustrating. And I feel like we've taken so much from Gainesboro, piece by piece. And now we want to try, we want to get the playground done, we want to have a area, another area up there where we can, you know, have events and so forth. And now here comes higher ed talking about, we want this land, which really, it should go back to the rightful heirs, the Gainesboro, the heirs of the Gainesboro community. But I do have two questions. I'm a little nervous because I was a plane on speaking today, so bear with me.
You're fine.
I have two questions. What does Roanoke City have for the remaining properties they own in Gainesboro? I am sure there has been discussions, planning reasons for the playground push, and not the amphitheater. Second, although the city is not inclined to deed the Gainesboro property to higher ed for a parking lot, would the city sell that property to higher ed? The city said that they would not deed the property, but if higher ed offers the money, would they sell it to higher ed? And I guess, I just feel like, why was Gainesboro, I feel like we was left out. Why can't we, the city, come to us and see what we can do? I mean, why weren't we in the mixed part of it? You know, it's like all these discussions, and then you just come in and alert about this is what's gonna happen, but why, why can't we own it? Why can't we do something with it? Why can't that be a form of apology? Instead of just an apology to the community, maybe that could be a form of preparation along with that, let us have that land and do something with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. I just want to make sure that we heard those questions correctly, that we can follow up on, what's the cities, you got them? Got them, perfect, thank you. I was also gonna suggest that it might be good at some point to get an update on the Gainesboro plan that was brought to council and approved, to see where we are in progress on that.
Yes, sir, I was gonna ask you if that would be permissible, to ask for the inner-city manager to do that, as well as to, but to bring us up to date on the meetings that have been held in the community, at the library, with both associations, because I'm hearing different things from both sides. So I too think the council should be aware of whatever the city is doing, that way the public knows as well. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carter, welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb, and to the city council members, I am Kathy Carter, and I represent Gainesboro community. I'm like Brenda, we did recently learn, about a week or so ago, about the proposal that higher ed has made with the city. And we didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare, but we wanted to make sure that they knew where we stood on behalf of the community. Now, I don't know how much you all know about Gainesboro, but this has been a disinvested community for many years, that we have been working together, both organizations, to try to rebuild and look for grants. We keep talking about when planning comes, we say you need to look for grants, you know, because there are a lot out there to help rebuild. So in recent conversations, we had agreed upon a playground where the parking lot is, where they wanted to, you know, the city to deed over to them. So that would interfere with our plans for our children. And then we've also set up an agreement where we're gonna have amphitheater, and then when the CDBG funds come in, we have made plans for housing and businesses. Now, the opera money has been out there for, well, over four years. Here we are in the last hour. There's not dirt shoveled, there's nothing. So we're, we're feel like there's been delay, but we don't know the reason for the delay. So I think if we can just find a way for planning, to work with the council, so that you all know what we're doing in the community, I think that is something we need to work on. And the other thing is that, you know, this was like a Black Wall Street to the Black community. You know, they built their homes, they lived there, they built their businesses, and all the land belonged to our ancestors, and that is part of reparations. I don't know who's in reparations, we haven't heard from reparations, and they need to get involved in our neighborhood and start working with us. And so I hope that some kind of way that we can just work together, rebuild this community, because we're looking for the successes of this local community to be developed, and where we can prosper and thrive as a community once again. We appreciate your help, but economically, we just feel like we're at a disadvantage, and we don't know what to do. You know, we're trying, we're putting forth effort, and we're meeting, we're discussing things, but it's not getting to you all. And one thing I would like to ask is this, when situations like this come before council, people interested in the land, the buildings, we have established neighborhood organizations, would you please refer them to the neighborhood organization? They've been established way before higher ed.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
The next two speakers, Bailey Helgason and Peter Noble.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for giving me your time. I am Bailey Maderis with the Roanoke Valley Collective Response, and I'm here to express my profound gratitudes to the city of Roanoke, with particular appreciation of Mr. Wayne Leftwich, who have all been remarkable partners, supporters, and stewards of opioid abatement funding. All involved have been thoughtful about the funding, its significance, and the pain and suffering that necessitates it. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. The importance of the abatement funding cannot be overstated. Despite the tireless efforts of collective response stakeholders, our community continues to grapple with the devastating consequences of the opioid crisis. Our friends, family, and neighbors are suffering and dying at alarming rates. Quickly approaching is International Overdose Awareness Day and National Recovery Month, and I want to invite you all to join us in our efforts to recognize these observances. On August 29th, at the Taubman Museum of Art, numerous community partners will come together to offer a space of support, safety, and remembrance for those impacted by overdose, which is all of us. Also, beginning one week from today, we'll launch our awareness campaign. Through the end of September, Purple Ribbons will be worn to facilitate education, reduce stigma, initiate conversations, and connect individuals with needed resources. I hope each of you will join me in wearing a purple ribbon as a symbol of our shared commitment. Thank you all sincerely for your work and attention to the opioid abatement funding and service to the city of Roanoke. Thoughtful dedication will make tangible difference in the lives of countless individuals in our community and beyond, and I'm very, very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey. I know a little bit later in the agenda, we'll be getting an update on the opioid abatement authority funds, and are there community partners here today from the collective response that might like to stand so that we can see who you all are, and the, thank you for the work that you're doing in our community to address this epidemic?
Absolutely. Lots of us. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much.
Peter Noble. Okay, we'll move on. Barbara Dirk.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager, city treasurer, city clerk. I am Barbara Dirk, and I encourage you to remain an open and welcoming city. The All-America city recognition was because of your inclusiveness, and Roanoke needs to recognize our diverse opportunities and communities to allow them to be, be part of our community. What I'm asking you today are two things. One, I'm asking council to request that communities, boards, and authorities meet at convenient times, so persons who serve on these boards, authorities, and commissions can more likely serve. Some people do not have flexible work schedules, and by having most of them between 8:00 and 5:00 o'clock, that eliminates a lot of, a lot of people from serving. It also eliminates a lot of people from attending these meetings. So that's my first ask. And I know that I've been on planning commissions since in the 90s, and it's still meeting at the same time, and I would like to see that changed, so it's more convenient. Number two is that we have a word that's used in our codes, and it's by right. And by right eliminates requiring notification to adjoining property owners and to the neighborhoods that something is going to happen. And right now, we have group homes and substance abuse homes, and I was at one with Bailey on 11th and Stanton the other day. on 11th and Stanton the other day, another day in May, in May, and Governor Yonkin's wife was there for a ribbon cutting. It was an exciting event, there were lots of people there, Mr., the city people, but the neighborhood was not notified, and they would have liked to have known that that was happening. But we have a tendency, because it's by right, to not let people know. And we have communication, we have, that needs to happen, we need consensus, and we need compromise, and we need our zoning to not include by right, because it eliminates this step in encouraging cooperation and communication among neighbors and what's going to happen. So let's keep neighborhoods strong. I'm going to read that, these are two vision statements from the city, I'm gonna read those again, and I appreciate you all recognizing them. "The city is a safe, caring, and economically vibrant community in which to live, learn, work, play, and prosper, and a vibrant urban center with strong neighborhoods set amongst the spectacular beauty of Virginia's Blue Ridge." There is many departments here, and I know that with, these lights made me a little nervous up here, but with Eureka Park and Washington Park, you've had lots of community input, and the city has listened, that the new zoning that's coming through, some of those issues are routine, but others that say things are by right will hurt the dialogue and allow the open and welcome-ness that we need to build in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dirk.
Vice Mayor Cobb, can I respond? Ms. Dirk, I just wanted to respond to your concern about the boards and the times that they meet. Please know that we have concerns about that, and we are discussing that, and we have been. So I think we're all looking at those different times that the boards and commissions meet. I think it's important to all of us that they're at a time when people can attend. And as far as the event with Governor Yonkin, the majority of this council wasn't aware of it either, and that's why we were not there. So I think they will do things like that differently moving forward, because we didn't get notice either. I think that was coordinated by the governor, his staff, and so we were not aware of it.
Well, yes, Mrs. Jalen, the city has said that they didn't know that Mr. Wayne was there, so I know that somebody...
A couple people did, the mayor was there.
And I'm sorry that you weren't there, because it was a wonderful event.
We were too, but I'm just letting you know that a lot of us were not aware. It was just something that was done with the governor and a couple of staff members, so it was not the entire staff. But I said all that to say that I agree that I think things will be done differently moving forward, and thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
The next two speakers, Mar Strong and Tyler Breeding.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mar, and it's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you for giving me time and space. I wanted to address the opioid abatement funding, and thank you all so much for the efforts that you're putting in to help save our city. I do want to highlight a little bit of information, just to maybe give a little bit of push on the funding. Our overdose fatality rate in Roanoke is three and a half times the state average. The state average is 28.9 people per 100,000. In Roanoke, we're at 102.2 per 100,000. You're asking people with lived experience. I am one of those people. I am in recovery for about four and a half years almost. You're asking us to re-traumatize ourselves, you're asking us to take on vicarious trauma, support people who are newly in recovery, thinking about recovery, not really thinking about it, still in active use, for $18 an hour for this PRS position. It's not sustainable for somebody who has lived and continued living experience with deficits in social determinants of health, for $18 an hour. Let me tell you a little bit about my life, four and a half years later. I have two disabled children. If I were to work for $18 an hour, I have to do, I have to take them to appointments. They get up to three appointments a week. That's an hour for each appointment, plus another 30 minutes there and back. That's automatically taking me down to, not even including travel, 37 hours a week. That gives me 612 hours a week gross to survive off of. I have to do my own recovery work. I attend counseling, I attend therapy, I also do group sessions. Now I'm at 28 hours a week. That's $504 a week gross to survive off of. I need childcare for my children. We have been waitlisted for daycare since, my youngest was born in June of 2023, we've been waitlisted since July of 2023, and I just got added another year of waitlist. So I have a private nanny, and if I employ her 40 hours a week, which is only my working hours, not including travel, it's $520 a week. Out of the 504 I make a week before taxes. That's really expensive. I don't qualify for a social service help because she is not a licensed daycare, so I'm already at a deficit. I'm on, again, multiple waitlists. I live in a house, excuse me, in southwest, it took me a long time to get into. It took me from October of 2022 until May of 2023, less than a month before I gave birth to my child, because my particular building that I lived in, in the apartment in northwest, had been shot three times. Three times I had a baby and was pregnant with another child. But my rent has almost doubled to get out of that and to get a safety net. I pay $1,400 a month. I can't do that on $18 an hour, and I think that it's unrealistic to expect a member of the community who already is struggling with resources and recovery, and learning how to re-acclimate themselves into society to support somebody else who's not in as good of a position as they are in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mar. Appreciate it.
Dive right in. My name is Tyler Breeding. I live in Cave Spring with my family, but we work, play, eat here in the beautiful city, and we love it. I'm also a member of Pedals Safe Roanoke. I frequently ride my bike into town via Brambleton Avenue, and the infrastructure there is narrow painted lanes or gutters, and that is, of course, if there is a bike lane at all. It's extremely uncomfortable and at times dangerous. I've experienced parked cars in the path that require me to merge with vehicles doing 35, 40, 45 miles an hour. I encounter drivers who exceed the posted limits, do not feel the need to give me space because I am quote-unquote "in the bike lane." I've seen drivers that swerve into the lane in front of me to avoid an obstacle in the road because I am squishy. This environment discourages many people that would otherwise use our bike infrastructure from doing so. And I don't feel comfortable bringing my family with me on these excursions, I would love to. The solution to this is better protected, buffered, separated bike paths that will increase safety and rider tolerance, getting more people out there. These bike lanes that are protected by visible vertical barriers, like flexible bollards, concrete curbs, are proven to increase rider safety and are key to getting more people out on bikes, especially commuters, women, and young riders. Vertical protection means, like these bollards, give drivers visual cues to stay out of the lane and give bikers a little bit more buffer. One of the biggest reasons we don't have these protected lanes in the city is that we do not have the equipment to clean or plow protected bike lanes. It's narrower, we hear that a lot, how are we gonna plow the roads once we put up bollards along the edges? What we are asking, and I am asking, is that when you prepare the next city budget, that you include funding for a type of smaller cleaning plowing equipment and operator training, like the type you use on the greenways already, that could be dedicated to clearing protected bike lanes. That way, that becomes one less obstacle in creating a protected comprehensive network for cyclists. Other cities, from Richmond and Montreal, use special equipment like this and allow for general transportation cycling year-round. The city has a stormwater fund that might provide money for equipment and training, and the city could even experiment with renting the equipment for the bike lanes like they do with regular plowing equipment. Pedals Safe Roanoke is made up of many career dedicated cyclists who experience our infrastructure challenges daily, and we have educated ourselves on the trends and changes with infrastructure that help make safer, more vibrant, and prosperous cities for everyone. Our members would be happy to help in any capacity, advisory committees, public outreach, and public education. I would like to thank you for listening to my perspective and our request today to consider this equipment that can make our streets safer, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Have you approached the county with the same request? So there's uniformity with what would be the right thing to do?
Well, I have. I have spoken at length with my board supervisor.
But that's a V-dot question.
And it is V-dot, and I have gone to those planning meetings, and I get the same responses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all who took the time out of your day to come and be with us today. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. However, if discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I do want to call our attention to four requests for closed meetings. The first is from Councilmember White Boyd, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that the council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 Code of Virginia as amended. The second is from the city attorney requesting that the city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding actual litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Code of Virginia as amended. Number three is from the interim city manager requesting that the city council convene in a closed meeting to consult on a personnel matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Code of Virginia as amended. And the fourth is a request from the city attorney that council convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney. With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Next part of our agenda is the regular agenda. The first item is public hearings, and we have none. The second are petitions and communications. Our first is a presentation of information by the Partnership for Community Wellness with regard to outcomes from ARPA and Gun Violence Prevention Commission funding. Christine Gist is the grant coordinator and the spokesperson, and this is sponsored by Mayor Lee and Councilmember Moon Reynolds. So, Ms. Gist, you have 10 minutes, and we're glad to have you here today.
Thank you. I have to include Mayor Lee. Thank you all very much.
Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of the Partnership for Community Wellness, we thank Mayor Lee and Councilwoman Moon Reynolds for sponsoring our presentation today, along with Vice Mayor Cobb, council members, city Roanoke staff. My name is Christine Gist, and I have the honor of helping to implement a Gun Violence Prevention Commission grant. We are joined by our esteemed director, Nancy Hands. Way of Nancy, let everyone see you. And my brilliant coworker, Lee Stover, who wrote this grant application. The PCW was honored to receive this grant. We thank all of the commissioners and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission who managed the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act to address the last stage of the city of Roanoke's initiative of response, recovery, and resilience. The PCW, along with our partners and mission, implemented programming to add positive childhood experiences to address adverse childhood experiences, to provide trauma and resilience-informed approaches and counseling, to educate about substance use and violence prevention, to empower youth with self-regulating skills, to expose youth to challenging activities while encouraging them to have fun and to play while they learn. We closely worked with the Envision Center, community partners, and members toward neighborhood beautification efforts, all while creating experiences for youth and adults to increase feelings of empowerment, joy, and overall well-being. The PCW would like to highlight our partners and mission and have them stand up as we say their name and organization. One of the Partnership for Community Wellness' grants initiatives was REAL, which stands for Real Independent Leaders for Life, Roanoke Independent Leaders for Life, a youth mentorship and boxing program that was led by four amazing instructors and mentors. Tim Wade, owner of Combat Fitness, please stand up. Thank you. Antonio Stovall, founder of Incestral Perspective, and Erin Blackford of Blackford Barbell Strength and Combat are not here today. The fourth instructor was Antoine Curtis, please stand up so that they can identify you, of Modern Gladiator Offering Mixed Martial Arts. Alex Siple with Wild Way also was one of our partners and mission, and she brought outdoor excursion experiences to young girls. And we could not have done this programming without our amazing partners and missions. Some of them are absent today, but they are here today in case any of you all have specific questions about the programming that they were able to implement. So thank you all, and we'll let you sit for now. Thank you. Yeah, they did a great job. Thank you. In addition, Jefferson Rose with Alternative Arts brought his diverse circus and performing arts talents to teach youth at the Melrose Library. Natalie Brown of Redeemed and Recovery brought her trauma-informed counseling to the Envision Center and the Northwest community, along with a tree-supported, a tree-planted counseling. And what I handed out to you all was some of our Get the Facts, like, information that we provide in community conversations, and we also educate youth in the school system. So those are for you all to have on hand and review at your leisure. We were joined by other community groups like Roanoke Plockers to do three community cleanups in the grant's timeframe, which ended at the end of June 2024. And all of our partners were trained in trauma basics by the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network. Mrs. Bean of Melrose Library welcomed Jefferson Rose of Alternative Arts. She provided an area in the youth section of the library to offer his juggling lessons to youth on Wednesday nights, which is a very busy evening for them, they have a dinner and movie night. Jefferson brought his trunk full of juggling supplies into the library for 10 two-hour workshops with the youth. He had classes there every week from May 1st to July 10th, with the exception of Juneteenth, when the library was closed. On June 5th, Lee and myself set up a table, and we were able to distribute 100 pieces of information on prevention, substance use, particularly opioid prevention, in addition to all the other ones that we educate about. And also, we were able to hand out these expired... And also, we were able to hand out these expired, for expired medication, these drug deactivation kits. So, at every event, we always handed that out to people so that they can safely destroy expired medication, or medication that they're not using, because we know that that causes a risk if that's just left in the medicine cabinets. Jefferson worked closely with over 40 youth that came back on a weekly basis to practice what they learned before, to learn new tricks, and to keep having fun. He is an amazing teacher that builds upon their self-esteem, all while teaching you skill sets that help their brains grow stronger. So, the neuroplasticity of the brain increases when one learns how to be ambidextrous, or learn both, like, how to do something with both hands at the same time. Activities like juggling accelerate that growth neurons and the connections, and that relates to memory, focus, movement, and vision. The left and right hemispheres of the brain actually grow stronger when you're doing activities like that, and that helps to heal from adverse experiences and trauma. I have some great testimonials. Oops, I'm skipping ahead. I love this one. A girl says, "I've always wanted to juggle since I was a little kid," from a nine-year-old. A 17-year-old youth said, "I like learning new things, and this course really helps me to do that. I've learned how to juggle, make balloons. I'm learning how to use a flower stick and streamers, and it's really fun." Capital F-U-N, double exclamation mark. And Mrs. Bean said that herself, her staff, her community, the parents, and the kids love Jefferson's classes there at the Melrose Library. They have been scheduled from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and they've provided a fun learning environment for the youth there. I was able to join him in those activities. I actually learned how to juggle scarves myself, and a little boy taught me, who had learned the week before. It's just an amazing program. Another program that we implemented was with the Wild Way. During spring break, the Wild Way offered a variety of confidence-building activities, including hiking, caving, climbing, and team-building activities to young girls. They worked on vision boards. They all took pre- and post-tests, which showed a gain in their confidence. One could really see the impact, particularly on activities like climbing wall, like the climbing wall and caving that requires a lot of perseverance. For the stand-up paddleboard events, the girls from Northwest were able to experience paddleboarding, some for the first time. And, you know, they didn't, they were scared to do it at first. It was something new, and it's challenging, and with Alex's support and the support of her staff, they were encouraged, and the girls stuck with it, and they can't wait to do it again. So, this is an annual programming that the Wild Way offers, and since January 2024, the Wild Way has worked with 10 girls from Northwest, having them participate. Four of them didn't get to do the stand-up paddleboard activity because the temperatures were just too high that day, but we will continue to work with them in the future. Some testimonials here. One girl created her own Wild Way pledge. "I pledge to be brave, kind, curious, creative, and of course, wild." REAL, Roanoke Independent Leaders for Life, a youth mentorship and boxing program that was led by those four diversely talented instructors that offered five two-hour workshops for youth at Tim's Gym. The REAL program was open to boys ages 10 to 17 years old and was led by trusted community members, and it really helped build mental, physical strength while focusing on discipline, Grant coordinators, Lee, Nancy, and myself, we were all there during those workshops, and we set up a little tabling event, and we were handing out those prevention, education information packets, and also the expired medication deactivation pouches. Tim Wade gave me a testimonial, and he said that the youth were positively impacted by the workshops. The youth liked the brothership of the program. The fitness classes gave the boys a place to talk safely about things and get older men's opinions on how to move and act, especially during stressful situations. Also, they were learning and enhancing their physical abilities. On May 11th, the PCW hosted a tabling event during the Envision Center's community cookout, and it was also during the community art project. The PCW handed out 45 bags of those prevention, education pieces, promotional items, and those expired medication and drug deactivation kits. And it was a gorgeous day out there for all that were there, being part of that project in the cookout. And here is Natalie Brown with the inner healing workshops engaged. She engaged community members to enroll in the trauma and resilience-informed healing workshops that they were able to work towards. Antonio Stovall had stopped by there right before he was on his way to do one of the workshops at Tim's Gym Combat Fitness. Daniel Horn, a youth leader, handed out flyers to promote all of the REAL Action, REAL Talk Youth Mentorship Boxing Program, Envision Center Community Cleanout information, and flyers to promote other events that we were organizing. The PCW volunteered in community cleanups, along with the Roanoke Plockers and other community partners. On April 8th, the PCW partnered with Standing for Equity in the Roanoke Valley, served in the Kiwanis Club to do a two-hour neighborhood cleanup in the Northwest area around Melrose Library and YHQ, Youth Headquarters Goodwill. On May 29th, in partnership with Roanoke Plockers, we participated in a community cleanup beautification initiative near the Envision Center. And on June 25th, community partners met on Melrose Library for a third one. The Partnership for Community Wellness immediately worked towards sustainability for all the programming. We received a behavioral health equity grant from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to fund a pilot youth mentorship and dance program featuring an America's Got Talent semifinalist named, stage named Snap Boogie. That is going to be offered by Jefferson Rose of Alternative Arts. He's helped to organize this and bring this Bostonian performer down to Roanoke to work with youth in the next couple of weeks. We also got funding to continue with Natalie Brown's Redeemed in Recovery and a tree-planted counseling services at the Envision Center and for Northwest community members. But unfortunately, the space of, like, writing in the grant application, it did not give us room to fully flesh out the great benefits that we had with the juggling program, with Alex's Wild Way program, and with Tim's amazing gym, and Antonio Stovall, Antoine Curtis, and Erin Blackford's incredible programming with the youth that they did. It just didn't allow us time to flesh out those benefits, and they did not award it. So, we are continuing to actively source funding to continue these programs. We were able to see those benefits, and I was excited to share those images with all of you, so you could see a little bit of what that impact was for community members. As we actively continue to try to source funding, I did invite them all here today so that you all know about these organizations, and if you have any follow-up questions, they are here to answer that as well. I do have a specific ask from the esteemed, thank you, City of Roanoke council members, thank you all, also the City of Roanoke staff, and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, and those commissioners, to keep the Partnership for Community Wellness, the successful programming, and all of our amazing partners and mission and their organizations in mind when funding opportunities become available. And I thank you all for your time and attention today, and if you have any questions for myself, our staff, or our partners and mission, please, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gist. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a great, great report.
Yes.
I'm gonna-
Thank you.
I'm gonna invite Councilmember Moon Reynolds, as one of the sponsors, to share questions or remarks, and then I'll open it up to the rest of council.
Okay, well, I'll be, I'll be very brief with my comments. Thank you for coming. Thank you for asking, and I'm appreciative to have served as a cosponsor. It's obvious that there is very facets, there's various facets of the Partnership for Community Wellness with all that you're doing in the community. And in fact, Nancy, as Vice Mayor Cobb will be able to testify to, is that we had her come to the Kiwanis two weeks ago, where she shared some information, but on a different side of what the partnership does with the collective response. But it's from all aspects of that, you all are doing a great work in the community, especially where I saw where you're doing the cleanups with the Kiwanis, where, again, Vice Mayor Cobb and I are members. So, we know that you, we do a lot of outreach in the Kiwanis, and to see you all out there, as well with the Plockers, and all that you're doing good work and bringing the community, especially the youth, getting the youth involved in a purpose. So, it shows us that they are doing good things rather than trying to find things that kind of hinder them. So, I thank you for coming and giving the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members?
I just have one question. It's probably for you, Vice Mayor. I think the big ask is the funding to continue some of the programs, which we really hope that they are able to do, especially Wild Way and the boxing. All of those are really good, but is there any funding that might come from the Gun Violence Prevention on that side, or no?
Not necessarily from the commission. I know the city is, has submitted a grant for, which one was just submitted Friday?
Safer Neighborhoods.
Project Safer Neighborhoods. There are multiple grants that come out through the year through the Department of Criminal Justice Services, so we're keeping a close eye. I know city staff's paying close attention to those. Sometimes it depends on the guidelines and the parameters.
Yeah, I was wondering, would these programs be eligible?
But many of them are open for community partner collaborations, so I hope and understand that, you know, staff, and just so that the staff and the commissioner are aware of those and can bring people together to build on that collaboration. And, and I would say to you, Ms. Gist, and any community partners, as you become aware of funding opportunities that the city can partner with you on, all of that's helpful. Because, as you mentioned, the challenge often when you get funds to pilot something is they don't necessarily allow for sustaining those programs. And that's the challenge we're facing, is how to sustain those programs, which we can tell through evidence are making a difference. So, thank you for, for bringing this today.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Hi, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you have done. My question is, have you tried to do outreach to non-English-speaking community members?
I think that that is an increíble pregunta, y sí, en las oportunidades es muy importante igual. So, and, and for example, you know, we are always seeking opportunities to be able to build on equity, and equity includes all community members and persons of color, and outreach towards the Hispanic community. I would love to circle back and, and reestablish partnerships with some of those contacts that I had previously. So, invite me, please, to any actividades that you know about, por favor.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time today.
Y gracias.
And thanks to all of you who were part of this effort for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is a presentation of information from the Roanoke Higher Education Authority with regard to providing complimentary student parking. We're pleased to welcome Kay Dunkley, Executive Director of the Roanoke Higher Education Center, as the spokesperson, and this is sponsored by the mayor and myself. And Ms. Dunkley, welcome. You have 10 minutes to share with us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, members of city council, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this afternoon. The Higher Education Center is known as a hub of learning, where colleges and workforce agencies come together to our campus to offer education and training to the citizens of our region. We are celebrating 24 years of existence. During these 24 years, we have many successes to share, most especially that we have awarded over 14,000 degrees and certifications, providing opportunities for individuals to earn a degree, to get a GED, gain skills necessary to enter the workforce, receive upskilling to allow for upward mobility, or just simply to pursue a new career. But today, I want to focus on one of our greatest accomplishments. Due to the hard work of our nine colleges and workforce agencies, we will experience a 25% increase in student enrollments in the fall 2024 semester. We are thriving. This upswing, or uptick, if you will, of enrollment comes from people entering the fields of workforce readiness, delivered by TAP, This Valley Works, enrolling in healthcare programs, delivered by Radford University, SOVA School of Health Professions, and TAP, pursuing a degree in social work offered by Radford University, or engaging in culinary arts, delivered by Virginia Western Community College. These institutions are working aggressively to meet the diverse needs of our region's workforce. Also important to note, we have sustained enrollments from Virginia Tech, James Madison, and Virginia Commonwealth University. Fall semester commences in the next two weeks. We will be hosting over 300 degree-seeking students who are on a semester academic schedule, and another 1,400 who will need parking accommodations sporadically throughout the day for GED, nursing simulation center, or even attending classes for adult and professional education. Currently, we have 134 available spaces for parking on Henry Street, Center Avenue, and Shenandoah Avenue. The center leases three parking lots, those three that I mentioned, two of which from the city, and one from Norfolk Southern. Given the high cost of tuition and books, we feel that it is incumbent upon us to provide complimentary parking to any and all students, no matter what programs they're pursuing. Today, I am standing before you to request the city transfer the deed of the higher education lot, which is currently operated by Park Roanoke, to the Roanoke Higher Education Authority. The diagram outlines the property in question that extends north from the Central Walkway Plaza up to the grassed area along Wells Avenue. This will add an additional 68 spaces, giving us a total of 202. Currently, free parking works like this: first come, first served, with the largest crowd arriving from 8:00 and leaving at 3:00 p.m. Our arrival and departure times will differ depending upon class schedules, which often shift throughout the semester. Initially, my request to you was to include property of two tax IDs, 2103019 and 2013004. New information has come before me indicating that we are altering our request for the grassy areas, because we understand that this is part of the Gainesboro Restoration Project and designated for a future community playground. We will not interfere with that planning. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but with me today, I have our board member representing Radford University, Glenn Mayhew, Avon Campbell, Dean of Business, Technology, and Trades from Virginia Western, and Dr. Tom McKinnon, former Executive Director of the center. So, if they would come up and say a few words, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Glenn Mayhew, and I serve as the Assistant Provost for Radford University here in Roanoke, and I also serve on the Roanoke Higher Education Authority Board. I am here today in support of the additional parking support in question. This is a wonderful challenge that we have here before us, as it signifies the great successes of the Roanoke Higher Education Center in meeting its mission of providing the citizens of Roanoke and the region it also serves beyond that access to training, certification, and degrees. Radford University is the largest leasing current- Radford University is the largest leasing currently of space at the Roanoke Higher Education Center and will have approximately 220 full and part-time students there the fall of 2024, including those in nursing, education, and social work. A significant portion of those students reside here in Roanoke and the counties surrounding Roanoke. By granting this request, you will help keep education affordable and accessible for the citizens of Roanoke and surrounding municipalities that will help meet our workforce needs, support the region's economic engine, and continue to make our regions a great place to live and learn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
Greetings, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Yvonne Campbell. I am the Dean of Business, Technology, and Trades at Virginia Western. Dr. Sandel sends his greetings and requests that he couldn't be here, and he's asked me to speak for the Culinary School. As many of you probably know, we occupy the Claude Moore Education Complex, and we have culinary arts programs there. We have about six programs. We have Associate of Applied Science degrees, and we have what we call Career Study Certificates, which are less classes, more work-based skills that our students learn from those programs. We also offer workforce programs, and that is training, customized training, and open enrollment classes to allow our students short, quick programs to get them into the workforce, either for entry or to advance their skill. Give you a quick overview of what we are doing down there and our students. We have 259 active students in our programs. We have 101 enrolled for the fall semester and approximately 425 courses, all contained at the Claude Moore Education Complex. The way that our school is set up, it's actually set up like a culinary institute. So we run classes from 8:00 a.m. until 5:30, sometimes 6:00 p.m. So everybody's encapsulated there during the day, and that is when our students use most of the parking. Most of our students are Pell Grant recipients. We probably have the most of ours programs from Virginia Western. Yes, we're not on the main campus, we're downtown. Most of our students are coming from the downtown area. They are relying on transportation that's affordable for them. They're also relying on us to provide the free student parking, so this would be a great benefit to them. A lot of our students go into the tourism area, and Roanoke is, I know they're very proud of the tourism activities that we have here. After COVID, culinary arts students' salaries have increased significantly. So because of short staffing, we are seeing our graduates many times be able to find employment without even completing a program, which we really want them to do because it helps the vitality of downtown Roanoke. So we are in support of the additional parking lot. We would appreciate any help that you can provide us, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Light was green just a minute ago.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Tom McKean. Some of you will remember me as the Executive Director of the Roanoke Higher Education Center during its first 17 years, and I continue to serve on the Roanoke Higher Education Center Foundation Board. From that seat, I've seen the center continue to develop further and under the leadership of Kay Dunkley and her excellent team excel. Programs have evolved to meet critical regional needs, and enrollments are up. From the very beginning, the city of Roanoke has been a key partner in the establishment and the ongoing development of the center. We come to you this afternoon to seek your approval of the transfer of the surface parking lot adjacent to the center to the Roanoke Higher Education Authority. This transfer will represent an additional contribution by the city to the Higher Education Center that will enhance accessibility for its increasing number of students. There are many obstacles facing students attempting to further their education. The transfer of this parking lot will help reduce one of them. We thank you for the support the city has given the center from its very beginning. The center would not have been here today without that support, and the center's success in the future will continue to rely on the strong partnership with the city. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McKean, and thank you all. Ms. Carter, I see your hand, but if you could jot your question down and bring it to the clerk, that would be great. At this time, I know I'm one of the sponsors, but I'll, I'll yield first to my colleagues for any questions, follow-up that you'd like to have, and then I'll follow up with that. So, anybody down here? No?
I want to remind folks, once again, that being older makes a big difference in your memory sometimes. Sometimes it does. We found out during our economic development studies when I was on council, Roanoke was the largest city in the United States without a four-year public university.
Correct.
John Edwards, among others, got a bunch of folks together, and we decided that it was too far to go to Virginia Tech or Radford for commuter students. That was before we went 85 miles an hour in '81. That's different now. But the smart road idea was generated by the very thought that Roanoke did not have enough educational opportunities for our citizens, and that's how we got involved in that. Ironically, when Dick Rovers from the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors came to the Smartway Committee, we looked at him when he said it was, it was a connector road. He said, "It needs to be a smart road." And we go, "What is a smart road, Dick?" Now Virginia Tech has billions of dollars coming into it every year because of that road, not completed, but, but performing its function. I think the most important thing for us to remember is that Roanoke was in dire straits when it came to understanding the need for close-end commuter education for not only students that would be traditional students, but others who had a need for workforce development and much more of the types of jobs that we generate in this region for the most part. So this center has been an incredible opportunity. I can't imagine that we can't work out some way to be helpful to you all and to also help Gainesboro. I think those of us that have grown up here know the Gainesboro issue, and while I don't see it as so much a reparations thing, I see it as a common sense, be fair to everybody thing, and we appreciate your amending your original proposal to us as it regards those interests in Gainesboro. I'm sure we'll have to figure out what all that means before we can make a decision. But I think it's important to understand the background of just how important this organization is to people, not just in the city of Roanoke, but into the Roanoke region. And so we thank you all for what you do. The numbers are impressive. I was involved on the Board of Trustees when we got FERAM involved, and unfortunately, FERAM pulled out, and I'm very disappointed. That happened some time ago. But it shows what this means and what it does for people and how it changes their lives. And I had the good fortune of working with Tom some and with you as well, Kay. So thank you all for a job well done. Let's hope we can find a good way to help you all in Gainesboro as well.
Our next economic impact study shows that we contribute $10 million annually to the Roanoke region and another $8 million by spending from our students. So thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish?
Yeah, we have, going this way.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reynolds.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dunkley, for the presentation. As you mentioned, the increase in student enrollment, that's a good thing.
Yes.
As well as the challenge that you all are facing to accommodate that, that increase. However, I am just, I, I was surprised last night after trying to look through my agenda materials, and I saw the letter from Decanite, and that really sent me sore, and my blood pressure even went up. I contacted a couple of members in the Gainesboro area to have the conversation, and was told that they were too surprised, and I want to make sure it's clear that there is no public hearing tonight, because some thought there was a public hearing on the matter. And I kept saying, "Not on my agenda do we have a public hearing where the city is going to be deeding property to higher ed." So I appreciate you bringing the presentation forward, but I'm somewhat still baffled as the process always look at a process, everything in decency and in order. And my question really is to the manager to say, is this something that has already been discussed with the city administration, with this request as being asked?
This matter has not been discussed with us as interim city manager.
Okay, that's what I want, that was the first question. And the reason why I asked that, because that's part of the process.
Yes.
And to bring it before council, for it to be referred, pretty much, is what I see that's going to happen here, if it does, or how we will respond, because we can't, as a council, do anything without a recommendation from management as to whether this is a good idea to deed it or to talk with economic development. There's other parties, other players involved in the administration that needs to happen here. So I, again, I think to put at ease some of the concerns that Gainesboro have, now they need to be brought into the whole spectrum as well, because I know under the Gainesboro plan, that property was being part of economic development. And now we're looking at deed, so it's almost the impression, what I got last night on the conversation is, again, the city, they're blaming the city. You know, the city is doing this. The city has now again come before us and have said one thing and done another, although it's you or either econo, I mean, higher ed that's asking for the property. But the community is looking at it as part of what the city's saying, because now that they're saying, the two that I spoke with has even said the city is planning to use the property for a playground, because some of the members in the community wanted playgrounds. So actually, I don't know what's going on. So those are my comments as to we're putting things, putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, when we really need to be hearing from the administration as to what should be done here.
Yes, respectfully, respectfully, council member. I asked to meet with the interim city manager, and I was directed to meet with Angie O'Brien, and of which that meeting took place last week. So, so Ms. O'Brien is aware of this transaction, and that I would be bringing it forward. Ms. Moon Reynolds, I have met with Ricardo Stovall and a smaller group of the Histori Group. This was not the entire group. It was a called meeting, and I know that that information was rushed and perhaps not enough questioning or not enough time to address Q and A. Constance Critchfield and Jordan Bell and I have spoken, and they understand that if, if we are to delete the area, the grassy area, that they would be more in favor of, of just the, the deeding of, of the parking lot. So if this has been a rush, my apologies to this board, and we will take the necessary steps to, upon your guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, I'm aware that Assistant City Manager O'Brien had a meeting, returning this morning from my short stay at home. I was advised. What I would suggest is that, and Mrs. Carter's questions here are questions that we're, we have not even discussed, so she's concerned about the playground being gone, two acres of this. I would like to have an opportunity to meet with my team, meet with economic development, meet with planning, meet with neighbors in, what's the name of the community? Gainesboro, so that we can come back to you, and we'll move this forward expediently. It will not be something that the Higher Education Center will be waiting weeks or months for. We should have something back to you by the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Volason?
I assume that several of the questions that I had are probably going to be answered by the city manager. I just wanted to also, looking at this plan, I want to think about the future and the sustainability of parking in that area, considering that number two, number four, number five are all in our Gainesboro hub plan to be developed. And so what does, you know, I understand about the wanting that one lot, but what does that look like in the future as we develop that hub?
Mr. Volason, we too are scared about that. We too are concerned. If the city were to develop the Henry Street and also Shenandoah, Number Four, Center Avenue, then that's going to leave us with actually very little parking. So we're just trying to think ahead. I do not know the timeline by which the Gainesboro renovation project will take place. Hopefully, I will learn more about that, Dr. Patton, so that we can plan accordingly.
Yes, I think there might be, just, this might be a good way to start a more substantial talk about what that future looks like.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Volason. Ms. Whiteboy?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Having served on, on that, on the board for the Roanoke Higher Education for, I don't know, many years, four or five years, I understand the progress that has been made and the students that are now benefiting from the Roanoke Higher Education Center. And we're looking at 202 spaces total if this were to happen, so I'm concerned that there's not even enough right now. And we're talking about education and education, and it looks like from the numbers and from the statistics that you provided us, or students primarily in that area or coming from that area and surrounding areas. So, you know, I'm sure some of the questions will be answered. I think some of the things that have been said or, or some of the questions are a little bit premature. I think we just need to take a step back and take a look at this from the, from, I guess, a collective lens so that we can get the entire picture, because I know what, what you're trying to do. I understand what, what, what you all are trying to do, and I think it's important because we're, we're talking about education, we're talking about students, we're talking about free parking that, to accommodate that, and we're also talking about a community who has already been hit and saying, you know, we don't, you know, we don't think that this is fair, and we don't want anymore. So I think, like Mr. Fitzpatrick has said, that there has to be a way that we can, can make this work. And, and I'm looking forward to the conversations, and I just wanted to say that, you know, even at 202 spaces, I'm a little bit concerned that, that, I, I just don't know how that's going to, and I would hate to see you all move and go someplace else, because we need you where you are right now. So that, that is my primary concern. So thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for helping us understand what it is that you are, are trying to do.
Thank you, Ms. Whiteboy. Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Ms. Dunlop?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Are all the spaces in paid to park, in both parking lots, are they full? Are they always full?
They are during certain periods of the day, mostly between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., especially when our clinical nursing simulation students from Radford University are with us. That's typically Monday through Thursday. Yes. Now, there are downtimes, Ms. Sanchez-Jones, there are downtimes, of course, between semesters. There are downtimes on Friday. But this is a critical need. This is, this is a pledge that we want to provide for our students and help them in every way possible. And certainly, we will work cooperatively with you, City Council, with you, interim city manager, and with the partners, our neighborhood partners. We too are Gainesboro, our neighborhood partners in Gainesboro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So just to share a couple of thoughts. First of all, Ms. Dunkley, you've done what, what you're called to do as Executive Director of the Higher Ed Center, to bring what, bring forward what you all need. And you have, are experiencing exponential growth. I know one of the rooms that many of us have had meetings in at the Higher Ed Center on the main floor has been taken over by the Radford Nursing Program.
Which is a good thing.
Which is a good thing. So it's not only about parking, it's about space utilization in your, in your facility. So I appreciate you bringing this to us. One of the questions that I had was, and I, I think this is already true for these lots, how many of these lots currently that you all use are shared lots? In other words, while the priority is student parking, at other times of the day, they can be utilized by other people in the neighborhood or the city or even the hotel?
Typically, Vice Mayor, they are utilized by the Gainesboro community, especially when Ms. Campbell is entertaining folks at Claude Moore. When the Gainesboro community are using the Claude Moore, then certainly we open up any and all of our parking lots. There are so five handicap spaces that are included in this lot. Those handicap spaces will stay put, they will be free, they will be open to the public, they will be open to our faculty, to our staff, to our students. So those will remain and will not be compromised.
Okay, thank you. I noticed Mr. Mann is here, not to put you on the spot, but I, I'm going to. going to.
Yes.
I know that in some previous conversations, we've heard information about the Hotel Roanoke and their expansion in different regards. And could you talk a little bit about, in addition to the Higher Ed Center, what some of the other challenges are that we're looking at related to parking in that part of the city?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. So yeah, we are under contract with an architectural firm to do an expansion at the Hotel Roanoke and Conference Center. We're really excited. As you know, you approved the bond issuance for that, and thank you. We're getting ready to move forward, and it's going to be just an unbelievable project. So when this was on the books back in 2008, as far as feasibility, it was deemed that there was a parking garage that would be, needed to be built on the hotel site to accommodate for overflow parking for additional conferences. That was pretty hefty. Back in '08, it was about seventeen, eighteen million dollars. It did not make it to this year's cut for the expansion. As you can imagine, with the cost of construction and the increase of inflation, it would have been astronomical. So when we did the feasibility for this expansion, we did identify, on this graphic here, which is Lot Number One, which is the ask of the Higher Education Center, and we identified that as a close and alternative overflow parking to this expansion. And Mr. Cobb, you asked the questions, which are shared lots besides higher education users? That would be number one and number three. Both of those are owned by the city. So in essence, the ask of the higher education will be taking, taking number one off, which is about sixty-eight parking spaces. So to give you an idea, that's kind of where we're at.
And how, what's the capacity, if it's full, of the Gainsborough garage?
Gainsborough Garage is 358 spaces, currently 248 are occupied, of which some of those are Rutherford University, thank you, and Higher Education Center employees, and as well as maybe daily students that might be coming in and choosing to park there.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
We were smart enough when we built the garage next to the old fire station, and also when we built Campbell Court, to put foundations under them that would allow additional levels. Does that garage have underpinnings that would allow additional levels on it? Because I don't remember that being discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. I really have no idea. But I can definitely, and will find that out for you.
If it wasn't discussed, it probably isn't. But that's a, one of those options that you can always look at, if you can add a floor to, to that garage.
Sure. And I believe the original intent for building that garage was to really serve the Higher Education.
It was, and the apartments next door.
Right. So at some point, they, that department stood before you and asked for this garage to be built, which there is still utilization available. So I'll just leave that there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mann. The other thing, which Councilwoman Moon Reynolds alluded to, was process, and what would be necessary for us to take action on this. And I'm going to ask our city attorney, Mr. Spencer, to enlighten us on that.
Real quickly, anytime we dispose of public property, whether through a long-term lease, or a sale, or conveyance, then under fifteen point two dash eighteen hundred, we are required to notice a public hearing, conduct a public hearing, and then if council would want to achieve that conveyance, it would be by ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I had was related to the Gainsborough plan. I think we've indicated here, expansion of the hotel, expansion and growth of the Higher Ed Center, and within all of that is the Gainsborough plan that we adopted, and some confusion about where we are with that, wanting to see progress being made. And I don't know if anybody is, Mr. Leftwich, if you're able to share with us just briefly now, kind of where we are with that, and what within the plan converges with what we're seeing up here?
Yeah, well, good afternoon, and glad to talk briefly about it, and perhaps sometime briefly a little more in depth about this. As you know, we had five million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act money to focus on Gainsborough. We had a larger project that did not work. And so we've been working with the neighborhood over the last couple of years to try to develop what those next projects would be. We had a plan that talked about development, redevelopment, exciting things in this area, community hub plan, that did talk about some things that could happen here. I think most of the neighborhood would like to see parts of Henry Street come back to life a little bit. And so we do have some key owned parcels by the city that may eventually be revitalized in a way to meet the neighborhood's needs and to serve that Henry Street. Currently with our project, we have two and a half million dollars that's going towards streetscape improvements on Gainsborough Road. We hope to have that under contract in the next couple of months. We are looking, as was mentioned, at a playground that would be on the grassy field that we spoke of, just north of where this asked parking lot is. We just had a meeting with Gainsborough, Historic Gainsborough and Gainsborough Northwest, to talk about that location. So we're just now working with a playground consultant to get a design, build, look at that, see what that might look like. So we'll continue to have conversations on that. We're also looking at an amphitheater located next to the Gainsborough Library. So we're working with a consultant now to do some design work for that. And we're also utilizing five hundred thousand dollars to do homeowner rehab right now in the Historic Gainsborough neighborhood, and likely, once we do some work over there, we'll still have some funds to cross over Gainsborough into the Gilmer area to focus there. Ahead of our target area, which in a couple of years, all our community resources dollars will be focused over in that area, from about Gainsborough to Eleventh Street in that area.
Okay.
So that's the quick version of it.
Okay. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Mr. Leftwich, do you have any idea how many children will be using the park?
We hope a lot. When we worked with Parks and Rec to talk about, so we've looked at several locations for a playground in this area. And actually, Parks and Rec was very excited about this particular location, because as they look at ten-minute walks throughout the community, this was an area that did not have a playground within a ten-minute walk. And as we do those improvements along Gainsborough Road, one of the main goals with that is to create a safe crossing. The big focus of that work is on pedestrian crossing, and so that we connect both sides of that neighborhood again, and make this part of the community accessible, and really become the neighborhood center that it was, has been, and should be.
Thank you.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
You mentioned that, and help bring me back up, because the last conversation that I was aware of until last night was the, the five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
That was going to be toward the playground area, and the amphitheater was going to be on the northeast side. And I was told that the, I guess, the negotiations didn't go well, and that there would not be a playground area down on, because it was a private developer that you, private owner that you were looking at.
I think, if I may, I think what you're speaking to was the playground in particular. We were trying to purchase property at a different location.
Right.
Down towards the Greenway.
Correct.
Down Gilmer and Patton. And we were unable to purchase that property. And so we've begun looking at other locations. And that's why we had the most recent meeting to talk about this location on the corner of Wells and Henry, if you will.
And how recent was that meeting?
That was a week ago or two weeks ago. So the neighborhood can tell me.
Right, okay. And so this was to, my understanding from the conversations I had last night was, this was put forth, they agreed to it, because the money was running out, and there was no other place to look at. And this is what I was told. I'm just saying what I was told. And that you were pushing for this area to be used. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. I'm just bringing that forward. My concern is, even if that is the case, whichever way, playground, to put a playground area across Wells Avenue is not safe. To put it on a corner of where Gainsborough goes downtown, Wells Avenue to the, to the, to the corner, and you're looking at, as you said, streetscape, safety, I just cannot see children trying to cross, children taking children, as children do, to a playground area on a corner. I guess this looks like at a corner lot, in a grassy area, where you are looking at, I just can't support that. And I just think there are other alternatives, if they, if you, if the city was to discuss it with other owners in the community. One happened to be one that rejected an offer prior, during discussions. In their proposal, they had a playground area that they were, that they were trying to put part of a program, in their, I guess, in their development.
I'm aware of that parcel, and that would work too, if we could.
Right. And I guess I'm just saying, if that's one that could be looked at.
It hasn't come to fruition.
But again, I don't know if conversations has been held with them again, about that parcel, since you just discussed it in a week.
All right. I want to bring us back to our purpose here, which is the proposal that you all brought. This is all just information sharing, and some of it's speculative. So it's not our purpose in this moment to fully discuss that, but I really appreciate this conversation. Interim city manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Vice Mayor and members of city council, please allow me an opportunity to look at all the pieces that have been discussed today.
Thank you.
Because it's evident, I don't know, I'm new here. You have been here, and it may have been presented to you, but I need to bring it back to you.
Sure.
And Mrs. Carter and her group, which I've met before, I will be back with you as we work to get this back to council, and meet with my team who has been speaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Leftwich, and Ms. Dunkley, and all of you. Thank you for your time today and for this proposal. We understand the urgency of it. And as the interim city manager said, we will not delay in getting word back to you about the process going forward. So thank you again for your time today. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. I want to take a five-minute recess, and we will return in five minutes.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. Thank you very much. We're moving on with our agenda, and item number seven is the reports of city officers and the interim City Manager, and we have two briefings. The first one is the fiscal year 24 budget, and Dr. Patton, do you want to introduce?
Yes, I will.
Yes.
I will introduce.
Do you want to officially introduce?
Yes, yes, I would. This is our purpose. Vice Mayor and members of City Council, through a national search by Gov HR, I'm pleased to introduce Mrs. Margaret Lindsay as the new Finance Director for the City of Roanoke. Mrs. Lindsay has broad finance experience in local government. She has top financial credentials and institutional knowledge of the city's finances. She is a Certified Public Accountant with state and national affiliations with the Virginia Society of Certified Public Accountants and the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. As a former City Manager, as a interim City Manager in two localities, I can attest to how difficult it is across this nation to find finance directors with the credentials of Certified Public Accountants in both their state and on the national level. So, we are fortunate to have Mrs. Lindsay to be a part of our team as the new Finance Director, and we welcome her.
Welcome. Welcome, Ms. Lindsay, and we'll turn this segment over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council. Dr. Patton, thank you for the very kind introduction. I have only a few numbers for you today, and I will explain about that. This is for the month of July, which is the first month in our fiscal year. Part of the national entities that are monitored very carefully by any finance person that works in municipalities or schools is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and so I will not take any of your time other than to mention the entity. They mandate that we look at 60 days' worth of transactions, so the month of July, the month of August, and we look at them literally, almost individually. Do they belong in the new fiscal year? Do they go back in the old? And so, until we get through that 60 days, I will say that the numbers are unsettled. They are not inaccurate in any way. For preparation for today's presentation, I ran all of our numbers around the 10th or 11th of August, and that's what's presented for you today. Are they different if I ran the exact same reports today? Absolutely, and they will be different again. And that's fine, that is normal for this time of year, and I don't want any badness to be thought of with that. They are just unsettled. That coming along with our new implementation of our new resource management system, I will say quite honestly, finance is doing a bit of double duty. I do want to give a shout-out huge to the Department of Technology under Ms. Boer's leadership, have been an integral partner in helping us do the tweaks, figure out some of things in the new system so that we get where we are at this moment. So, numbers. I know the print on our slide here is a little small. This information is in the agenda for those who would like to maybe stare at it a little more thoroughly. I do want to point out that none of the, what I call, major revenue streams to the city are in any way compromised, have strangeness in them, don't look like they would be expected to in July. But I will point out one item. Recordation and probate taxes for fiscal year 20, the actual, for a year ago from your council report, shows an amount of right around $137,000. We have an amount of $169,000. And again, that is a timing matter, not long after, I made my report information here, what came in the door downstairs in the Treasurer's Office, but $137,019. So, again, very comparable on the revenue side of things. It's just a matter of timing at this point. So, again, no major items above or under at this point. And I will also say that when I come back to you next month with the August information, that's about, I believe the meeting is on September 16th, so we'll be through that 60 days. The first two months will have in the year-to-date what's supposed to be in '25, and any of those items that have come in in July and August that belong in '24, grant reimbursements for expenditures that were made in '24, and our grant partners are now reimbursing us, they will get put back where the expenditures are. So, we have a little bit of work still to do for this. Expenditures, again, look very strange. I absolutely admit, 42 million in fiscal '24, which was last year, same month, 18 million in fiscal '25, a little bit of a snag in getting postings from our payroll system into the new system, all fixed. The numbers would be significantly different run today. Again, no concerns with is public safety, only spending half a million dollars in a month instead of 7.3. No, that is, again, a timing matter, and I'll be happy to explain in more detail, certainly if there are any questions, but a snapshot in time is what we have.
Thank you. Any questions?
One comment, Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. Lindsay, it's wonderful to have you back home.
Thank you.
Those of us who know you, she was our treasurer at the Virginia Museum of Transportation in an earlier life, and so we know each other well, and what a wonderful thing to have you back in Roanoke and being our Director of Finance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you.
Our second briefing is a presentation that everyone on the council should have on your dais. I'm pleased to welcome Ms. Gwen Coleman, Director of our Department of Social Services, Department of Human and Social Services, and we're happy to have you here today to bring us a report and update on the extraordinary work you all are doing.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Cobb and to the members of City Council. I do want to provide an overview of the Department of Social Services, Department of Human and Social Services in regards to our, in regards to the work that we're doing at Social Services. And so, the Department of Human and Social Services, we have five main divisions. We have our homeless assistance team, our benefit services program, our family services program, the Children's Services Act, and the Juvenile Justice Program. So, with our homeless assistance team, I just want to highlight that this year, because of the supportive services that they have provided to our unhoused population, we were able to move 220 individuals to permanent housing. And so, you see the data here in regards to the number of case management contacts, the number of people that they have assisted in obtaining their ID, and the paperwork that they need to secure housing, bus passes, and all the support that they provided to our homeless population. So, our benefits program, we have a lot of different programs in regards to our benefits program, and our benefits program are the Financial and Educational Assistance Program that are used to provide resources to families in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I want to give you and highlight in regards to some of our benefits program. So, our Medicaid program is one of our largest programs that we have within a division, within a benefits division. Roanoke City's population is 97,000, and we actually serve 41,000 residents in providing them with some type of medical assistance. And so, that's a huge population that we provide medical assistance to. Currently, we do have a backlog of about 3,000 Medicaid cases, and that is due to Medicaid unwinding. To explain Medicaid unwinding, during the public health emergency, we were not doing any renewals, any reviews, and so, when that ended, all of those reviews that we had, that we were not doing for the last three years came due. And so, they came due on top of the regular work that our benefits specialists already have, and so, they have been managing and we're working through that backlog of Medicaid cases. Our SNAP program, we issued about $30, about $3 million in SNAP benefits in the month of June alone. And so, for the last fiscal year, we have issued about $40 million in SNAP benefits. And so, we are looking at serving over 11,000 households in Roanoke City. And so, this is, as you know, the SNAP benefits that's received federal funds, but this is money that's going into our local city economy when we have families that need to purchase food. We have our TANF and our VIEW programs, and TANF stands for the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, and our VIEW program stands for our Virginia Initiative for Education and Work Program. And so, that program is designed to provide assistance to families that, based on their need, is a small cash assistance, and then the VIEW program is provided to support those families in finding work and full-time jobs. And so, in fiscal year '24, we actually were able to assist 152 people find full-time We also have our energy programs. So, our energy programs vary from our cooling assistance program that normally runs in the summer, that runs in the summer, then we have our fuel assistance program that starts in the fall, and our crisis program that also starts in the winter months. And so, these are programs where we provide additional assistance to families based on need to make sure that they can cool their homes, make sure they can heat their homes appropriately. Our next program, that we, one of our next programs is our Title IV E program, and this is the program, this is another subset of our Medicaid program. This program is designed to determine if we can receive eligibility for our foster care youth and our youth that have been adopted to provide that assistance to their families to cover for placement and maintenance payments for the foster families. And so, we had 146 cases evaluated this fiscal year, and only 40% of those families were eligible to receive Title IV E assistance, and that's because the federal government has not went back and looked at the criteria for Title IV E, the income limits for Title IV E, in several years. Other programs that we have, we have our auxiliary grants in support of housing, refugee assistance cash, our cremation assistance, and that is funded by the city, that's local funding, and we actually had 61 cremations during this fiscal year. The last unit I want to discuss for the benefit service program is our fraud unit. And so, we have an in-house fraud division, and they work on making sure that there are any cases where someone may have received benefits that should not have received benefits, they work on making sure a claim is filed and making sure that we work on recouping those funds. And in this fiscal year, we have recruited over $200,000 in funds that were given to someone that didn't qualify for those benefits. So, our challenges within the benefit services program is our high vacancy caseload and inexperienced staff. We have experienced a high number of turnover. When I came to the agency, we had over 25 vacancies in our benefit services division. The staff was carrying a caseload of 900 apiece, and so, we really worked hard to recruit and to hire more people, and then it's about training. And so, you know, it takes a while to learn the job, every case is different, and so you want to make sure that you have a very trained workforce, and that's, those are some things that we have done to try to address that. The food insecurities, that came in regards to during the pandemic, families were receiving the maximum allotment of SNAP benefits, and then, of course, when the pandemic ended, they went back to that normal allotment, and a lot of families were not prepared for that. So, that's some of the challenges that we faced. And so, we have increased our staffing with our benefit services program. We have approximately seven vacancies to fill. We have been able to level off some of the caseloads to give some breathing room for our specialists down to about 700, which is still a very high caseload, but it's definitely more manageable than 900.
Yeah, I would say.
Our next division is our Family Services Division, and our Family Services Division, it covers everything from our Child Protective Services, our Investigative Division, our in-home, and then we have Foster Care, and from Foster Care, we have our adoption, foster parent recruitment, independent living, and the Family Services Division also include our Adult Protective Services as well as our Child Care Unit. And as you know, with our Child Protective Services, we received last year over 4,000 calls. I don't have the numbers in regards to last fiscal year in regards to open referrals, but I do have the numbers for the prior fiscal year, and that we had 960 open referrals. So, even though we may receive 400 calls, some of those are to, some of those go to our Adult Protective Services Division, and then mainly of those are, most of those are our Child Protective Services calls. And so, we opened up 960 cases in 2023, and that puts us at about fifth in the state. With our Foster Care numbers, we, with our Foster Care numbers, we currently have, and I know your presentation may say 288 kids in foster care, that has changed. While we were here, sitting here, we got an update, and we have 291 kids in foster care. That number is a huge number, and we are looking at different reasons why we have the number of kids in foster care that we do. That is the largest number in the state. When I go back and I pull the data, I see several things. We have 90 kids that had the goal of adoption, and a lot of those adoption cases are pending in appeals, and so, we have to wait out that appeal process before that child can actually be adopted and moved to permanency. Over the last couple of years, we have seen an increase of children coming into foster care due to truancy, due to chance, and the release of custody. Those are usually our teenagers that have very extreme behaviors, some of them have criminal charges, they're difficult to place, but they're also difficult to achieve permanency for those kids. And so, those are some of the reasons why we feel that we have the high number of foster care kids that we do, and we're currently working a plan to address that, all of those issues, to try to resolve those issues. Our Adult Protective Services Unit, they currently supervise 295 guardianship cases. They are a very busy unit responding to any types of complaints of adult abuse, exploitation, and/or neglect. We are very proud that we did have one case where we worked with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in regards to a case of abuse, and we were able to receive felony charges against the perpetrator, and that was based on the documentation that the case manager provided to the Commonwealth Attorney, so we're very proud of that case manager and the work that she does. With our Child Care Unit, we have over 700 cases in regards to childcare. Right now, our childcare funding comes from the Department of Education, and they determine out the waitlist and the funding for our childcare subsidy program. The challenges that we have seen with our Family Services Division, of course, is the young people that young people that come into the department's custody that may not have a placement, or our foster children that disrupt, disrupt placements, those are youths without placements. And we have seen a decrease in foster homes and placements from the pandemic. And of course, we have those high caseloads, because if we have two hundred and ninety-one kids in care, we have a foster care case manager who's carrying a caseload of twelve to fifteen children. I will say that some of our successes or new programs and initiatives to address the number of kids that we have in foster care is our Kid First NAM program. Roanoke City was a pilot program with Virginia Department of Social Services, and they came on site. We worked with them to look at our processes, to see if we can improve our processes in regards to making sure that when kids come into foster care, that we can immediately identify a relative. I will say that out of the two hundred and ninety-one kids that we have in foster care, fifty-five of those children are placed with relatives. And the good thing about that is that we see that number pretty stable as we, as more kids come into care, but that's because those kids are also achieving permanency sooner, because we already have that family connection there. Also, one thing that we changed in regards to making sure that we didn't have any young people actually sleeping in the office, is that we started having high-acuity staffings once a week. And that's anytime that we have a kid or a child that's in, that's likely to disrupt their placement, we come together, we have a staffing, and we cover the case from A to Z to make sure there's nothing that we have missed, that we go back and we explore family, family relatives, and we go back and we look at those placements and say, what do we need to make this placement work with this child, and what does this child need in addition to just having a place to stay? So those are some of our initiatives within that program. So our next program is our Children's Services Act. And our Children's Services Act is a, is a program that was initiated in nineteen ninety-two. It actually became effective in July one nineteen ninety-three. And then this program, what the state did is that the state took the different sources of funding, put them together in one string, and developed this program that could be state-funded but locally administered. And the goal of this program is to make sure that the young person with high needs is able to come to, the team is able to come together and make decisions in regards to the services that the child and the family may need to support that child. And so the funding sources, of course, include the Department of Social Services, it includes Department of Education in regards to our private day placements, also includes Department of Behavioral Health and Department of Juvenile Justice. And we have a FAP team that's made up of those core team members, and a FAP team, a FAP is Family Assessment Planning Team. They meet twice a week. We review cases usually from nine o'clock to about three P.M., just making sure that we cover all of those high-end services for those children in Roanoke City. The mission of CSA is to make sure that we have the most appropriate service for the family and for the child. We want to make sure that we can intervene appropriately and that we can intervene quickly. And the way the CSA works is that we have several different levels. The way the Children's Services Act works, we have several different levels. We have the Family Planning Assessment Team, and then we have the Community Policy Management Team. So the Family Assessment Planning Team develops a plan for the family, and the Community Planning Management Team, they appropriate the funding for the family and for the services that's provided. And in your packet, you will see the data that we have in regards to the number of children that we serve through our Children's Services Act. Our last unit or division is our Juvenile Services Act, and our Juvenile Services Act serves the juveniles of Roanoke City that come to the attention of the court. And they fall under, and they fall under the Virginia Juvenile Crime, Community Crime Control Act. And so this, this, the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act has several different components, and we have our outreach attention. And so we have staff members who provide additional support to juveniles that may have been charged with a crime, and the judge has agreed that that juvenile can go stay at home in lieu of going to detention. And so then the juvenile has to check in with our outreach attention staff on a daily basis to make sure that they are where they're supposed to be. We have a mental health counselor that's part of this program. We have a substance abuse counseling that's also part of this program. And our truancy intervention program is relatively new, but this program was designed to address the truancy rates that we were seeing in Roanoke City. And of course, we had the purchase of services. And so that's when we would purchase mentoring or life skills coaching for a young person that's connected to juvenile services. So those are all of the programs that we have in regards to the Department of Social Services. Excuse me, Department of Human and Social Services. And I am ready for your questions.
Wow.
That's what we need to say, wow.
Wow.
Look at their work.
Well, before we get to questions, do you have some, some of your team that's here today that you'd like to introduce?
I do, I do. I have my human services administrator, Matt Crookshank, here, and he oversees the HAT team. I have my benefits program manager here, Lindsay Campbell, and she oversees the benefits team. I have Jen Como, my family services manager, and she oversees the family services team. Julie Payne couldn't be here today, and she oversees the Children's Services Act as well as the Juvenile Justice Act. I also have two additional people here. I have Meredith Berger and Jennifer Sworls, and they are managers of the support units within the Department of Social Services.
Thank you. Anybody?
Yes. Sanchez Jones, and I'll come back to you next.
Oh, Ms. Coleman, thank you very much for your presentation and for all you have been doing since you've been on board. My question is, what kind of documentation does a child or a parent need in order to receive, for example, food stamps, any, any of the services from social services?
So in regards to benefits?
Benefits, yes.
In regards, in regards to benefits, they must have documentation of citizenship, but I'm going to turn to my benefits manager just to make sure for all of our programs, that's correct?
Yeah, so it's not just, we don't serve just citizens, of course, but we do.
Can you please come up to the mic? Thank you. We just want to make sure our vast audience hears every word you say.
So some of our programs do require citizenship, but of course, we do serve a lot of refugee populations, immigrant populations, especially with the expanded Medicaid that we have and the famous prenatal coverage. So we do require some sort of ID, especially for the TANF and SNAP programs. Medicaid is not as stringent with that. However, you know, the biggest thing for us is we need an application. Of course, we get a lot of questions about that, and we always have to say, you need to apply because you may be eligible for something, but we can't really give you a lot of advice without an application. So, yes, some of our programs do require citizenship, but there are many different levels of programs, especially Medicaid, that we can work with for non-citizens, permanent residents, refugees. We do offer refugee cash, refugee Medicaid the first twelve months that they enter the country. So there are additional programs for many of the populations.
But that is a difference, what a refugee receives than an undocumented immigrant.
Absolutely, absolutely. And undocumented, we do have some means to help them as well. We do have emergency services Medicaid if they have an emergency and have to go to the hospital. So there's still some services out there, and the famous prenatal coverage also can assist pregnant women with coverage as well.
Are they eligible for TANF or food stamps or any of those services if you're undocumented?
Typically, no. But if they do have, say, if they're undocumented, but they do have a child that's born in the U.S., the child can be eligible since they are considered a citizen of the United States. So we, we can still help some of those families.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just wanted to tell you all, I have a daughter-in-law who used to be in social services and did foster care. I've never met any people more dedicated than the folks like you and all of those people that work with you, particularly dealing with the population and trying to help people. I know a friend who adopted four African-American kids. His, his parents are white. He has made such a difference in the lives of those young people. So what you do is God-sent, and I hope all of you, your entire staff, know how important it is to understand how significant it is for you to be where you are, doing what you do, because it takes a very, very special human to perform this kind of work and not get totally stressed out. Bless your hearts, and thank you, because when you give us those numbers, that scares me to death.
Thank you.
So I admire you all.
Counselperson.
Thank you. Ms. Whiteboy?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Coleman, for, for that presentation. You know, it's been a while since we've heard from you, but it's nice to hear and see all of the updates. And I, I just had a question about the foster care. That number is pretty high, and you, you gave some reasons that might contribute to that, that number and why it's inflated like that. But is there anything different than any other locality would have that you all are facing that maybe perhaps is something this council can help with or, or city manager? Is there something different? Because some of the things that you mentioned probably would impact the, you know, any other locality the same way, but I'm just trying to figure out, is there anything in particular that, that is causing our numbers to be so high as opposed to some of the other localities that surround us?
When I think about that question, I think about the totality of that, of that question. So there are a lot of different reasons why Roanoke City is unique in regards to the number of kids that we have in foster care. One of those is because we are a city, and we're surrounded by a lot of rural communities. And so those rural communities do not have the services and infrastructure that Roanoke City has. And so what happens is that when people need services, they tend to move to Roanoke City. Roanoke City is the only locality in this region that has a bus line and public housing. And so we also have the rescue mission, and so we just tend to see more volume in regards to those things. When I looked at the numbers across the state, I noticed that Lynchburg was in a similar situation. Lynchburg, they have a hundred and sixty-nine kids in foster care, which is pretty high for Lynchburg as well. But they are also a city that's surrounded by rural communities. And when I look at the numbers compared to Fairfax, and we have more kids in Fairfax County, but when you think about Fairfax, that northern Virginia, they have so many other areas surrounding them that can absorb some of the volume. We do have people move into our city from out of state because of the resources, because the rescue mission is here. We have people moving here, you know, within the state, moving to Roanoke because of those reasons. So that's, that's a huge part of it. We have seen an increase in appeals, so that is a delay in regards to children actually achieving permanency once the court has terminated the parents' parental rights.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing that. And, and, you know, sometimes we ask questions because other people need to know and other people need to hear, because we have people watching who may not be in, in this room who have the same questions, so it's very helpful. And I guess you're saying it's some of the same reasons that we have, you know, our homeless population that we're struggling with is because, you know, of our resources. So I guess it all goes hand in hand, but it just kind of makes sense when you hear it, and I appreciate you sharing that with, with all of us here and, and some of the folks who might be watching this meeting online.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Volleson?
Actually, this question might actually be more pointed towards Mr. Crookshank. This is about the homeless assistance team. I was just looking at the numbers. So I'll let you get up here before I start a question. First, I want to say you guys have done an amazing job of getting folks into housing, especially when you look at that ninety-eight housed in 2021, where we've come from that. That's really great. But I do look at numbers, it's a eight hundred and forty-one enrollments and new reenrollments, and a thousand unduplicated clients. So is that how many clients we have for this past year, or is this like a total?
So those numbers were the total for the last fiscal year. So those were clients that we did intakes with from July one of twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty-four. So it's an annual number, and the numbers housed were an annual number also. But, yeah, just the volume of folks that we're seeing cycle into homelessness is challenging. We've had some successes getting folks housed, but just the volume of people we see coming in for services is, is a challenge.
Is there anything, like, obviously, we need more resources, is that, we need more housing units, or is, we know that we need that, right? But what is it that we can possibly do as council to help improve that number? Is it more HAT team, or?
Well, we hired two additional case managers this year through the HAT team, so that's been a huge help, and we appreciate that support. But I think really to have an impact on homelessness, it's, we have to have an impact on the housing units and be proactive on the housing side to really stabilize rents. The rents have increased really significantly the last several years in the city, and that's really what's driven our numbers really, is just the scarcity of housing right now. So anything you all can assist with to increase units would, I think, have the most impact.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Moon Reynolds, do you have anything?
Okay.
Thank you, and, and just to follow up with what Matt just shared, I think it would be beneficial at a future council meeting to get an update from the BRIC, Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness. They have their report ready from the July point in time count, which gives us a window into what we're seeing related to homelessness for individuals and families. So I think it'd be good to hear from them.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. We appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. All right, we are now ready to move into our items for action. And number, letter A is the acceptance and appropriation of the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program for Law Enforcement Equipment. There are two measures. The first is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Law Enforcement Equipment made to the city of Roanoke by the Department of Criminal Justice Services of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? All right, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. The next item is a budget ordinance.
Second.
I think Mr. Fitzpatrick wants to move us right along, which is fine. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes, I will. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
I don't see any discussion, so will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Number B is the authorization for an encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company Valley Metro Bus Shelter located in the right-of-way adjacent to property located at Zero Lafayette Boulevard Northwest. There is one measure and ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to property located at Zero Lafayette Boulevard Northwest, bearing official tax map number two four three zero seven one two. Which bus shelter will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item C is the authorization for an encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company. Item C is the authorization for an encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company, Valley Metro Bus Shelter at Fallon Park in the right-of-way located adjacent to property at 502 19th Street Southeast. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Will you please read the title paragraph, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to property located at 502 19th Street Southeast, bearing official tax map number 4310101, which bus shelter will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number D has been asked by the interim city manager to withdraw. Item D at this time regarding the appropriation of revenue from the disposable plastic bag tax. Would you like to say anything regarding that?
Yes, Vice Mayor, members of council, I would like for this to be pulled to allow the staff to present to council how the monies from the bag tax will be utilized going forward.
All right, thank you. Item E is the acceptance and appropriation of the Fatherhood Engagement and Support Program funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia. And there are two measures. The first is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funding by the Commonwealth of Virginia to the City of Roanoke to promote the Fatherhood Engagement and Support Program through the Virginia Department of Social Services, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute any documents necessary to receive such funding and to take such further actions and execute such other documents as may be necessary to obtain, accept, implement, administer, and use such funds.
Discussion from council? I believe, do we have someone here from the department that would like to say anything regarding this? Okay, all right, all right. Well, we've got a full report included, but I just want to offer the opportunity. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item F is the acceptance and appropriation of opioid abatement funds directly received and those awarded by the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. There are two measures, and the first is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of new opioid settlement funds received by the City of Roanoke from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority in the amount of $952,443.84, and authorizing the rollover of certain funding in the amount of $602,608 to support various opioid abatement projects, as well as authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain and utilize such funds.
Any discussion from councils? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item G is the acceptance and appropriation of Virginia Department of Fire Programs grant funding. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Fire Programs FY25 funding grant, and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Next, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item H is the acceptance and appropriation of the Virginia Department of Emergency Management pass-through funding and reimbursements for the hazardous materials response team. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Emergency Management pass-through funding and reimbursements from the hazardous materials response team to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, authorizing the City of Roanoke and the Roanoke Fire EMS to serve as fiscal agents for the distribution of the grant funds, and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item I is the acceptance and appropriation of fiscal year 25-4 for life grant funding. First item is a resolution.
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing acceptance of the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Health FY25-4-for-life payment for emergency medical services made to the City of Roanoke, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. The next item is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Medical Services for the 4-for-life program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Seeing any discussion, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Right, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Did he say aye? Okay. Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. This time, I'm pleased to call on Dr. Patton, our interim city manager, for any comments you may have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have just a few items that I'd like to call to your attention. Welcome-in week will be held an upcoming September the 17th. The tour will be at the municipal building tour at 10:00 a.m. Thursday, September the 19th, the Job Fair at 10:00 a.m. That will be at the main library. And Friday, September the 20th, there will be a citizen celebration at 10:00 a.m. in council chambers. Would also like to call to your attention and the public that the Virginia Department of Transportation public hearing regarding the Orange Avenue Improvement will be held on Thursday, August 22nd. An update brochure for inspections for which the city will be responsible will be provided, and you can find that online. The envisioned Williamson Road, the visioning phase of the envisioned Williamson Road project is extending the current phase to ensure focus group meetings can be held in the month of September, and additional dates will follow when more information is available. Also, would like to announce that the Women's Equity Day will be held here in the City of Roanoke on Monday, August 26, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the Gainesboro Library will be holding its annual Women's Equity Day celebration in the Virginia Y. Lee Room, and lunch and tea will be served with activities provided. The summer point in time count numbers have been finalized and were presented to the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness on Friday, August the 9th, 2024, and there were 342 total individuals counted on the night of July 15th. This is a 15% decrease over the number of individuals counted during the January's point in time. And more information is available for you on that. And the Eureka Recreation Center groundbreaking will take place on Thursday, August the 22nd, 2024, at 9:30 a.m. at the Eureka Park. Those, oh, there's one more item for you, members of council. We have planned where council members, and we'll work with our clerk, and Mrs. Payne is working with the clerk, to schedule for you, two of you at a time, to visit the departments in our city so that you can get an overview of the purpose, similar to what you receive from the Department of Social Services today. So you will know what their responsibilities are, what they are providing, and what they have accomplished. So you will receive, once you are signed up, a department overview book, and it has an overview of all of the departments within the City of Roanoke. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. We appreciate that. Item number two is, we don't have anything from the city attorney at this point. Number eight is reports of committees. Are there any city council members who are liaisons to authorities, boards, or committees or commissions that you'd like to share any updates regarding? No unfinished business. Number 10 is the introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We do have a resolution ratifying and confirming the declaration of local emergency by the interim city manager. There's one measure, which is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution ratifying and confirming the declaration of local emergency by the interim city manager as the director of emergency management, conferring emergency powers in the interim city manager as director of emergency management, authorizing the interim city manager to make application for federal and state public assistance to deal with such emergency, designating a fiscal agent and an agent for submission of financial information for the city, and calling upon the federal and state governments for assistance.
Thank you. Any discussion by council?
I believe she passed us on by.
Dr. Patton.
If I may, Vice Mayor, members of council, being that I've spent many, many years in Hampton Roads, you know how many hurricanes and storms and floods and everything I have experienced, but I would like to commend the City of Roanoke's fire and emergency rescue and our police department for being so prepared, and the department heads who also worked tirelessly for us to be prepared if the worst came to us. But we were very fortunate that it moved north and we didn't get that weather. But I commend the team here for being prepared for such weather that could easily hit us at any time.
Yes, our gratitude to everyone. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item 11 are motions and miscellaneous business. Any inquiries or comments by members of council? Ms. Whiteboy?
I do, and thank you, Vice Mayor. And I just want to piggyback on the announcement that Dr. Patton mentioned on August the 26th, Women's Equality Day. And so we're going to continue that celebration at 6:00 p.m., August 26th, celebration of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. And this is a nonpartisan event. It is just celebrating the fact that women still have the right to vote, and we are excited about that. We will start at the MLK monument. We're wearing white, just like they did in the suffrage days 104 years ago, and men are invited. We want you to come out and celebrate with us. We're going to have a couple of speakers, and then we're going to walk on the sidewalks